Welcome to your City Commission meeting. Please turn off for silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 6:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. Call to order, Pledge of Allegiance, followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we've got some presentations and proclamations. Okay, this is for the Mayor's Award for Community Service to Christine Fritsch. For her exceptional development of the first Camp Leavenworth 5K and Walk. Her volunteer efforts inspired hundreds to participate in the fun and healthy event, bringing visitors of all ages and abilities to the city and the festival. Her creativity and dedication displayed the very best of Leavenworth. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to say a couple of words?
Of course.
Well, when invited to say something, I always say, "Say something." I just wanted to thank the City, the Commissioners, City Management, especially the Police Department, in particular the Police Chief and Sergeant Brandon Mance, who was really instrumental in helping with this. I'd like to thank my dad for letting me use his truck so much. And for everyone who was supportive and helped with this event. I can't wait to do it next year. Thank you. Okay, next up is a proclamation. And it's for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we have Ms. Catherine Russo here, Mr. Michael Trapp, and Board Member Representative Pat Proctor. Whereas, one in every four women will experience domestic violence during her lifetime, with approximately 15.5 million children exposed to domestic violence every year. And whereas, when a family member is abused, it can have a long-term damaging effects on the victim that also leaves a mark on family, friends, and the community at large. And whereas, domestic violence is widespread and is devastating to society as a whole, and the problem crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers. And whereas, the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control or abuse. And whereas, victims should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need with access to medical and legal services, counseling, transitional housing, so that they can escape the cycle of abuse and domestic abusers, should be punished to the full extent of the law. And whereas, we encourage domestic violence victims and their families to seek assistance from the Alliance Against Family Violence Hotline, 913-675-7217. And whereas, it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide services to victims of domestic violence. And whereas, the United States President, Congress, and other agencies have expressed a commitment to eliminating domestic violence, and we must dedicate ourselves to protect vulnerable members of our society with local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies to increase public awareness of domestic violence and to eliminate it through prevention and education. Now therefore, I, Kamala M. Leonhard, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all the people of Leavenworth, Kansas, to work towards the elimination of domestic violence. So congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Would you like to speak?
Please.
Mr. Trapp, if it...
I will, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners and City officials. The proclamation really laid out the facts really well. I will just add, you know, as we've... The gap area that I see is really in what's called coordinated community response. Domestic violence services with survivors will never be able to end domestic violence. It's going to take the united efforts of the entire community. So I'll be sending out some opportunities for a funding opportunity that police agencies and the courts and probation and parole would have an opportunity to apply for, to bring out that needed area in our community. And I also want to invite people to our Candlelight Vigil. It was a longstanding activity, and we've brought it back this year. And that's going to be on the last Saturday of the month, October 29, in front of the Justice Center. So if you could... I see people writing it down, so that's excellent. And I'll bring the... If you're going to be there, Mayor, I'll bring the proclamation. Perhaps we could read it again.
Okay.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you. What time was that? What time is it?
It's at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Okay, next proclamation is World Polio Day. And here today, we have Ms. Stephanie Meyer, who is the Rotary... is the Governor of the Rotary District 5710. And we have Diette Lombard, who is the Polio Chair for the Rotary Club. And we have Mr. Derek Wogomuth and other Rotarians and other Rotarian officers here as well. We've got a whole bunch of Rotarians here. And you guys, and I'm a lion, so please be kind. No. We've got some lions. Maybe I shouldn't have said that. I should wait until after that.
Is there a page?
Oh, I don't know, do I? Oh, great. Okay, well, here we go. Whereas Rotary International, founded on February 23, 1905, in Chicago, Illinois, USA, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations. And whereas Rotary is a global network consisting of over 1.4 million members and more than 46,000 clubs in 221 countries and geographical areas who unite as neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers to take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus, and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and GAVI, the Vaccine Alliance, to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas today Rotary has contributed more than U.S. 2.6 billion countless volunteer hours to protecting nearly 3 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional 50 million per year, which would be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional 100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas, in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $10 billion to the effort. And whereas, there are 73 members of the Rotary Club of Leavenworth who sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in our community and abroad. And whereas the Leavenworth Rotarians have committed their time, talent, and treasure to continue support of Polio Plus until polio is finally eradicated from the earth. Now therefore, I, Kamala M. Leonhard, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim October 24, 2022, as World Polio Day in Leavenworth, Kansas, and encourage all citizens to participate in this observation, observance. Okay, there you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you. There you go. Oh. I want to get in.
Thank you for your time tonight. We do appreciate it. And as Mayor said, we like to say that we are this close to eradicating polio from the world. So everybody can continue to do their part. Rotarians will continue to do our part as well. Jermaine has got his shirt a couple of years ago, so we would like to present an End Polio Now shirt to you, Mayor.
Oh, thank you.
And hopefully he'll proudly wear a Rotary.
He's in a dress.
That's right. That's right. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again. Okay. Next up, Mr. Norm Gretchen. Proclamation for... Whereas it's Military Retiree Appreciation Day. Appreciation Day, hello. Whereas military retirees have served our country faithfully in times of peace and war. And whereas military retirees have made significant sacrifices in defense of our freedom and liberty. And whereas a large number of military retirees and their families live, work, and play in Leavenworth community. And whereas the Fort Leavenworth Garrison will conduct a Retiree Appreciation Day on October 29, 2022. Now therefore, I, Kamala M. Leonhard, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, do hereby join the Fort Leavenworth Garrison in recognizing the contributions, sacrifices, and loyalty of military retirees in our community by proclaiming October 29, 2022, as Military Retiree Appreciation Day. There you go. Mr. Gretchen.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, City officials, thanks for having me today. I'm going to accept this on behalf of the several thousand military retirees that live in what's referred to as the Greater Fort Leavenworth Catchment Area. Quite a few folks. We're going to have this as the first one we've had in three years. 2019 was the last one. We did an abbreviated one last year that didn't go over quite so well. So we're hoping this year to bring it back up to full power. It will take place on the 29th of October on the fort at the Lewis and Clark Building. And please, if you have military retirees that are your friends or work with you, please let them know about it. They don't always do such a good job getting on the Internet and doing the social media thing. I've got a flyer here or a drop-off, and if you would twist their arm a little bit and get them to come in. We're worried actually that we'll lose this going downstream. I've watched the attendance drop off from about 1,200 a long, long time ago down to slightly under 500 now. So got to get those numbers back up. They will probably be giving flu shots, and they'll do a health screening. Munson will do a health screening, as well as many other vendors that will be present. So anyway, thank you once again. I appreciate your efforts.
What are the times on that, Norm?
Pardon me?
What are the times?
It starts at 8:00.
Okay.
And runs until 2:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So next up is old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes, minutes from September 27, 2022, regular meeting. Any questions or concerns from fellow Commissioners? We just need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to approve the minutes from September 27, 2022, regular meeting.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Hengula.
Aye.
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 Okay. Next up, next two items are just roll call vote. Second consideration ordinances. Second Consideration Ordinance Number 8196, rezoning of 2101 and 2013 Vilas Street from low-density, single-family residential to medium-density, single-family residential.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, I'm going to turn this over to Julie Hurley to give a brief recap, and we also have our City Attorney here if you have any questions.
Yep, just since it's been a few weeks since we had this, just wanted to give a brief reminder for everybody. So again, like Mayor said, this is a request for rezoning of 2101 and 2013 Vilas from low-density, single-family to medium-density, single-family residential. This will allow for the development of six single-family residential lots at this location. And if you'll recall, when this went to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend denial of the item based on some concerns from the neighbors. A lot of those concerns that we heard at that time focused around traffic on Vilas Street and some stormwater issues that we've talked through. In the... When you heard this on First Consideration Ordinance, the policy report that was included in your packet at that time included the golden factors that were required to consider by state statute. So you had those at that time. And as you are aware, the city has received a grant through KDOT for the reconstruction of Vilas Street that we feel will really address a lot of the concerns that we heard from the neighbors. So if you have any questions for me, I can answer those for you now.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, so I just need a roll call. So Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. Okay, Second Consideration Ordinance, next up is Number 8197, Adopt Text Amendments to the Code of Ordinances, Development Regulations of the City of Leavenworth.
Again, Ms. Hurley.
I don't really have an update. There's no change from when you saw this on the First Consideration Ordinance. We went over it in pretty good depth at the last meeting, and I didn't have any questions since then, and nothing has changed.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, just need a roll call. Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Bader?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Next up, new business, public comment, i.e., items not listed on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Public comment is limited to two to three minutes, and no action will be taken by the Commission on public comment items. Please state your name and address. A sign-up sheet will be provided in the Commission chambers for anyone wishing to speak. So I know we have Ms. Fritsch that would like to come up.
Do you have that first?
Yep. She's first on there. Was there anyone else? Okay.
So I just wanted to give you a little bit of a post-event recap and some results from a post-event survey that I did of participants at the 5K. Just as a reminder, the goal, or at least my primary goal, was to create an event that would bring a different audience down to Camp Leavenworth and hopefully infuse that very beginning of Camp Leavenworth, right at that opening hours on Saturday, which is normally kind of a dead period, you know, give a great infusion of people into that group. So I guess just a few demographics. You can turn to the next slide, Penny, thank you. From the survey, this... I mean, I really don't have to say much more than this. Every single person that completed the survey said that they would recommend it to a friend. So, I mean, usually when you do surveys, you get the complainers, but I think the worst complaint we had was that the donuts ran out, but we had never actually had donuts, so I'm not really sure where that came from. The demographics on the day were mainly in the kind of family-parent range, as you would expect, from about 30 to 50. Significantly, about 20% of the registrations were children under the age of 18, which is... I think that's really terrific. I think it was really a highlight for me to see so many families that came out, and many, many people came up to me after the event and commented how nice it was to be able to do an event with their kids that didn't cost an arm and a leg, that they could all do together. Male-female split, about 60% female, 40% male. That pretty much tracks with the U.S. statistics for 5Ks just generally. 80% local to the county and others really were within northeast Kansas, so no big surprises there. I think, you know, next year we'll certainly try harder to pull people in, and I think having the photography from this year's event is going to go a long, long way in pulling some people from a bit further afield. Where did people hear about it? Mostly it was from Facebook, and I didn't differentiate between Facebook ads and organic Facebook posts. I think most people don't know the difference or wouldn't remember. So just generally Facebook's. And the yard signs, very popular, who knew? So we'll do some yard signs again next year. About 20% heard about it from friends, so that's a pretty good rate of attrition there. And we'll work on that outreach going forward for next year as well. Next slide, Penny. Takeaways from the surveys, just overwhelmingly positive. Sunflowers were a big hit. The free drink ticket was a very big hit. They really loved... People really loved the cheerleaders. Course volunteers were terrific, the finish line, the price, the value, adjacency to Camp Leavenworth. About the only consistent issue that people cited was the two-loop course was a bit boring. And as you recall, that was not the original plan. We had to change that because of the construction on Second Street south of downtown. So next year, we'll look to... Going back to the original plan, which was a loop that encompassed South Esplanade and then another second loop that encompassed North Esplanade, so it really kind of stretched everything out. So we'll look at doing that. Couple people said there were too many hills.
Wow.
Kind of hard to avoid in northeast Kansas. Next slide, Penny. And then Camp Leavenworth attendance was the next... Was the last question that I asked. Of course, the goal was to get people into Camp Leavenworth. About 70% of participants went over to Camp Leavenworth right after the race. Only about 10% said that they never went at all, so about 20... Just under 25% said that they'd already been on Friday. Another 25%-ish said that they came back on Saturday after the race. So we had a few issues with coordination with the soundstage people and the soundcheck people. All of that can be easily fixed for next year, so we already have some ideas for implementing some additional features to keep people around even longer and keep people spending money, maybe doing a charity element for next year as well.
Pancake breakfast.
Yeah, wouldn't that be fun?
People love that.
Yes, and yeah, and I think that was really what was... I did think about doing a charity element this year, but without knowing how successful it would be, it was hard to plan it. But I think next year will be perfect for adding some kind of a charity element to And also sponsorship opportunities. I think, you know, again, now with the photography and with some results and some statistics and feedback from participants, it will be much, much easier to bring on sponsors. So just putting a bug in your collective ears for next year. I think it would be fantastic to have some kind of a finish line sponsor to do the decorations. And someone to help defray costs for the kids' entries. I think that would be a really good publicity opportunity for a business that really wants to reach out to families. And a beer sponsor. We're going to have two breweries by this time next year, so we should be able to get some free suds. And then just reiterating, next year, we'll go back to the single-loop course. Swag bags, I think, will be great. We'll also do a Friday check-in at Camp Leavenworth so that people can optionally pick up their t-shirts and pick up their bibs on Friday, which again, will get them into Camp Leavenworth. We'll also allow for onsite registrations at Camp Leavenworth on Friday, and I think that will further boost participation. Next year, we'll aim for 500 to 700.
Cool.
This year, we had 250.
That's what I'm talking about.
Aim big.
That's great.
Any questions?
Great job. Great job.
Yeah, that was great.
Thank you, thank you. It was a lot of fun. I really am looking forward to next year. Thank you.
It goes without saying, but Christine is a professional at this. I mean, to have her service at the City of Leavenworth is... I mean, we couldn't have done anything like this without her expertise, and so she was great to work with, and I appreciate all the Commission's support and the public's support. So it was a great addition to the festival.
It vastly exceeded my expectations. I had no idea that you were going to have on such a greatly... A really well-organized event. It was terrific.
Wow, thank you very much. I think my mother said, "I didn't realize this was going to be so professional."
There you go. It was very professionally done.
Any other public comment? Okay. So we move on to bids, contracts, and agreement. Consider approval of 2023 landfill services contract with waste management.
Brian Faust, our Public Works Director, will handle this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The item this evening is to consider approval of a refuse disposal contract with waste management for 2023. As you all know, the city has operated solid waste collections and disposal since at least the 50s. The city does dispose, on average, of about 11,500 tons of municipal solid waste each year. This waste is collected by city employees and transported to a state-approved disposal site. In addition to the municipal solid waste, the city disposals of roughly 3,700 tons of sludge or grit from the wastewater treatment plant. And sludge is defined by an interesting term called special waste. The city has... I don't get it. The city has hauled solid waste to various landfills over the years. In 2018, the city made the decision to bid out our landfill services. Waste management was the low bidder, and the city has been using their landfill in Shawnee since January of 2019. In extreme weather conditions and to address staffing shortages, the city will occasionally haul to the Leavenworth County Transfer Station, a much shorter haul force. The rates at the transfer station are significantly higher than waste management, so we do limit our usage to that transfer station. The county's rate for 2022 was $52 a ton. We do expect an increase in 2023. In 2023, the cost to dispose of the solid waste at waste management is increasing from $27.28 per ton to $29.72 a ton, roughly a 9% increase. And the cost for our special waste is increasing from $46.98 to $52.38. This is a 12% increase. In working with waste management, they've indicated their costs, due to inflation and supply chain issues, everything, happened over the last couple of years, has increased about 18.1%. So we're increasing at 9 and 12. This increase in cost will add additional $28,000 to our solid waste and $20,000 to dispose of our special waste. We do recommend that the city approve the landfill services contract in the amount of $29.72 per ton for our solid waste and $52.38 per ton for our special waste. Be happy to answer any questions.
Will this increase go over our budget?
No.
Good. Sorry, Madam Mayor. No, you're free.
It's a good question. When we set our rates during the budget period, we don't know yet what our increase will be from solid waste, so it's a bit of a guessing game, but we are able to accommodate within the budget as passed.
Good, thank you.
And if you're curious, you know, why you don't go out to bid again, who else is in the game? There's really nobody else. Ham's Quarry, which is on the west side of Lawrence, that just is a long haul, would be the next closest, and they're still more expensive than waste management. So there's not a whole lot of landfills out there within close proximity that we can use.
And they know it.
Right, you're right, and they know it.
Bit of a corner on the market.
Any other questions? I just need a motion. I move we approve the 2023 landfill services contract with waste management.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, First Consideration Ordinance. First Consideration Ordinance, amending the Code of Ordinances, Sections 22 to 25, 22 to 107, and 22-134, amending the licensing period. And I'll just need a consensus for this.
Sarah Bowden-Senner, our City Clerk, will handle this item.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, before you this evening for your consideration is an ordinance that proposes to change the licensing period of our health permit, the ice cream vendor license/permit, and the mobile food vendor license. Staff is seeking to streamline the licensing process for these three license types to better align with the state license renewal. Currently, the health permit for businesses expires on the 31st of December.
$29.72 per ton for our solid waste and $52.38 per ton for our special waste. Be happy to answer any questions.
Will this increase go over our budget?
No.
Good. Sorry, Madam Mayor.
No, you're free.
It's a good question. When we set our rates during the budget period, we don't know yet what our, what our increase will be from solid waste. So it's a bit of a guessing game, but we are able to accommodate within the budget as passed.
Good.
And if you're curious, you know, why you don't go out to bid again, who else is in the game? There's really nobody else. Ham's Quarry, which is on the west side of Lawrence, that just is a long haul, would be the next closest, and they're still more expensive than waste management. So there's not a whole lot of landfills out there within close proximity that we can use.
And they know it.
Right. You're right, and they know it.
They have a corner on the market.
Any other questions? I just need a motion.
I move we approve the 2023 landfill services contract with waste management.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you. Okay, next up, first consideration ordinance. First consideration ordinance, amending the Code of Ordinances, Sections 22 to 25, 22 to 107, and 22-134, amending the licensing period. And I'll just need a consensus for this.
Sarah Bowden Center, our city clerk, will handle this item.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, before you this evening for your consideration is an ordinance that proposes to change the licensing period of our health permit, the ice cream vendor license/permit, and the mobile food vendor license. Staff is seeking to streamline the licensing process for these three license types to better align with the state license renewal. Currently, the health permit for businesses expires on the 31st of December. The ice cream vendor and mobile food license expire on February 28th. All of these licenses require a copy of the current state food health license, but it expires on the 31st of March. So we're renewing a license that will have a state license that expires within 90 days or less. We have heard from our local businesses that they would like to see us kind of put those positions, put those things together, and renew their license after they've renewed their state license. That would allow them to get, pay for their state license, get that in, and then submit their copy to the city when they renew with the city.
Makes sense.
Makes it easier for them. They don't have to come back and submit a copy later.
Convenient.
So based on feedback that we've received from our businesses, we put together this ordinance to propose those changes. We're simply seeking to change the timing of these licenses. Nothing else in the requirements is changing.
Okay.
Great.
Makes sense.
Makes sense, yeah.
Makes sense.
To help the businesses out, you know. Yeah. Okay, any questions or anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, just consensus?
Yep.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, we got it. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, next up, Commissioner Martin with the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do move to approve the claims for September 24th, 2022, through October 7th, 2022, in the amount of $1,536,084.99, net amount for payroll number 20, effective October 7th, 2022, in the amount of $352,978.77, no police and fire pension.
Second.
Begin voting, Commissioner Hengel.
Aye.
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 Okay, great. Okay, that's the end of our meeting. Well, let's just see, Mr. Kramer, did you have any additional comments?
I do have a couple of things to share with the commission. So as we end our recreation sort of time of the year, I'd mention that there were nine shelter reservations at Hawthorne from the time we opened the splash pad, just on the temporary till last weekend. Normally, for the entire season at Hawthorne, we have nine reservations. So soon as it opened, people were grabbing it for birthday parties and all sorts of events, so we had nine in just the short amount of time it was open.
Yeah.
Steve Grant would like to build a second shelter out there so we can, so we can have more reservations. So the other thing is our features are in. They came, and so we are, we're actually going to install them for one day in about two weeks because they have to test them to make sure that they're good. So we'll put up some pictures up or video up, so you'll get a little sneak peek of what the features will look like next year, so I think that's pretty neat.
That's cool.
Related to the holiday, Halloween trunk-or-treat, all 50 vendor spaces are full, so the kids will have plenty of opportunity to get candy. That's the night of October 22nd. That starts at 5:00 p.m. Again, all 50 spots are filled, so a lot of candy for them. The Holiday Bazaar and Flea Market at the Community Center on Number 5th is also all sold out, and we have six vendors on a waiting list for that one. So we are certainly getting a lot of activity for those city events. We are going to do, we'll put some more information out, but Breakfast with Santa's back, so that's December 3rd. This will be the first year we've hosted that in a while. And of course, the mayor's holiday tree lighting and lighted parade on November 18th. Finally, two quick public works notes. Mill and Overlay has started. They milled Vilas today, 10th going west to 15th, Seventh Street, a couple streets in the downtown, North 7th coming up quick. And then on Monday is the city's Business Symposium, Monday morning at 8:30. That's October 17th at the Riverfront Community Center. The registrations are going well. You know, it's the first year, and we have a really good lineup of some good keynote speakers, and registration is free and the lunch is free. We just ask that you give us a head count if you're going to come, if you want to eat. Otherwise, we probably expect a few people just to come and see what's going on that day. So that's what I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hengel?
That's a lot of activities that are coming up in the Leavenworth area, and, you know, it's giving a lot of people a lot of opportunities. There'll also be some great sales, I guess, going on this coming weekend. I know there's an organization kind of thing that was thrown together, and they are going to be doing something over the weekend.
Autumn Festival?
Yeah, autumn, autumn shopping, the autumn, something like that. And I would, I would recommend, hey, it'll be a beautiful day. Yeah, we haven't had enough rain, but that'll be a beautiful day. I ask everybody, come on out and shop downtown Leavenworth.
Thank you. Yeah, I saw you at the Sunflower Insider Days when they had that.
Yeah.
A lot of shops.
Yeah, I was running around.
Nice turnout.
So got a few nice things, too.
Man, I'm just happy to be serving in this great community. A lot of great things is happening. Each year is getting better and better, so just thank you for the new businesses that's coming into town. Thank you for the organizations that are serving to meet the needs of the citizens in our community, and God bless, and have a great week. And if you need someone to be Santa Claus, AKA Shorty Claus.
Shorty Claus.
So cute. Okay, Commissioner Martin, did you have anything?
No, nothing really to tack on to that, so enjoying the fall foliage, and I love some of the new ideas that are coming up through the community, and want to capitalize on those for sure, so.
Well, I enjoyed coffee with the cop over the weekend and got to see Paul's lovely children down there eating donuts and stuff. We had a good, it was a good thing. I hope they had a good turnout with the general public. I saw a few people coming in and asking questions and looking at the swapmobile and all kinds of stuff. It's really a nice thing to do, to come out and have as many police officers as we had down there, just talking to people and getting to know the community, and I think that's a really good thing, is that community relationship that we have with our police department, so.
Open communication.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Chief Kitchens and the whole crew at the police department. Thank you.
Yeah, a good number of them were off-duty. They came down on their own time.
Yeah, I thought that was great.
That's nice. Dedication. Okay, no, I have nothing else to add to all that, you know, just a lot of great things going on in the community, and I'm excited, and I know everyone else is, too. It sure is going fast. It'll be mid-October next, or this week, actually, so we'll be saying Happy New Year before you know it. So anyway.
Veterans.
Oh, yeah, the Veterans Day Parade.